Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale Shrimate Bhakti Vedanta Swaminithi Namine Namaste Sarasvati De Gauravani Pracharine Nevi Shisha Shundevadi Vaschatana Deshataari Jaya Sri Krishna Chetanda Shri Atvetagandadhar Shri Vasanigor Hattabinda Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari Jaya Radha Shyam Sundar Radha Shyam Sundar Jaya Radha Jaya Radha Shyam Sundar Radha Shyam Sundar Jaya Radha Jaya Krishna Balaram Krishna Balaram Krishna Balaram Jaya Krishna Balaram Jai Gauranitay Gauranitay Jai Gauranitay Jai Jaya Prabhupada 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 Jaya Jaya Prabhupada Jaya Jaya Guru Dev Guru Dev Guru Dev Jaya Jaya Guru Dev Nita Gaur Hari Gaur Hari Gaur Gaur Pramandhe Hari Gaur Shri Rupaath Ki Jai
Hari Krishna and Pramdev devotees So, welcome to our Wednesday session on Uddeshamrit His only is Pritivathan Maharaj is here and So from last week's Q and A We begin Hari Krishna Maharaj Dhanurpranam
Hari Krishna
So we loudly welcome Maharaj by loudly chanting Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna
Hari Krishna
Hari Krishna Maharaj, how are you?
Doing okay How is it doing now?
Very cold Maharaj
Here it wasn't actually so cold for like maximum of week But since yesterday it got very cold
Yes Maharaj, we also I was speaking to somebody in Mayapur, they reached Mayapur today from Delhi And they said Mayapur is so cold
Yeah It's humid also, more than Delhi, so it makes it even more cold Feeling
Yes Maharaj Maharaj, how is the situation of COVID there? Devotees were talking that they want to come to Mayapur in March, you know, after Gaurpurnima How is the situation? Is it safe to bring a group there? Or should we? What Maharaj?
What COVID?
What COVID?
I don't know, I didn't hear anything about any cases Things are fine, now we are getting more and more pilgrims For New Year, there are hundreds, maybe like a few thousands of people So, things are getting like more into normal So over the weekends, we do get guests for the Hati Parigrama There are many coming
Okay
It looks normal
We were told actually situation in Calcutta is little not so good, but Mayapur is Pretty okay
I don't know, because I am in touch with some people in Calcutta So it must also depend on which part Because what I hear, Calcutta is quite normal also
Oh, okay Maharaj
So, there's also some people are more freaking out, some less Like in Calcutta, I went there last week And I didn't see anybody basically wearing any mask
Yes Maharaj, there is a situation in many cities where they have COVID, there also people are not wearing Maharaj
Yeah And which one is COVID and which one is flu, no? Who knows?
Yes Maharaj, who knows?
I was in Delhi, there is a lot of cases?
Yes Maharaj, they're coming down, but you know, the spread is there and In Gurgaon also, the spread is there, but Like things are running, I would say seventy eighty percent normal Only the IT people, they are working from home So rest, everybody is in the office
Okay And most of the cases anyway, they are like symptomless, no?
Yes Maharaj
So those are not even tested, they don't even know But, now those who get the COVID So, they should get the antibodies, then it should be good for like over a year, they say
Okay Maharaj, okay
They did some research on that So, getting the COVID then develops antibodies And they should protect you for a year or more So like vaccination
Oh, okay Maharaj I also got it checked, I also had antibodies Maharaj
I think everybody gets it at some point, no? And then we are protected for it, no? Now, when you get antibodies, you don't have to go for the shot It will be, no, giving basically the same So everybody gets it at some point, and then It will go down And eventually, maybe something else will come up Because Yamaamritu Jaravyadi We are constantly being put to suffer, no, through the modes of nature So ultimately, there is no material protection If you think you have enough money to protect yourself and you go to some hospital, no? Which they will protect you from getting infection, getting disease, it's foolishness No? Or you build your house, no, like a completely airtight So then, no, nothing comes inside, everything is filtered, all the air Then nobody comes in, okay, no? So you may, everything is sterile, but you will die of something else It's foolishness So there is no material solution To any problem So what we have to do, understand the The source of the problem And the source of the problem are the sinful activities of the people in the world And the source of the sinful activities Of the people is ignorance So because people are ignorant, they don't know what they should do, what they should not do So they are doing the opposite way because of Tamaguna Tamaguna, like Krishna says, not You do what you are not supposed to and you don't do what you are supposed to So, people do that, commit sinful acts And then naturally, then the modes of nature react So, it's the weather Now, which is getting upside down, now, it's dead, so Adidivika, adibautika, adiyatmika, and then we suffer because of that So, the only solution to this problem is to actually get educated So, from get out from the ignorance The ignorance of that we just can do whatever we want without any consequence, that's ignorance So if you learn that we cannot do that Then, we can properly educate ourselves and we should Uplift our consciousness At least, no, to Satvaguna But ultimately, the best thing is just, no, shuddha satva Krishna consciousness And then, all these diseases, all these calamities, all the sufferings, now as such Then, will be gone And we will have, no, finally, the golden age of the Kali yoga, which will come But, it's not, maybe it still needs some more purification So for devotees at least, no, it should be, they should understand that There is, no, a shot, no, will not protect you Now, we have to look for some other protection, and the protection is only Krishna Dutt's feet It's like, take the flu, right? They are making some shots, some vaccination for flu But the flu changes, three times a year, the virus mutates So the flu is good for the previous one But it takes a year to develop the vaccination So when they give you the vaccination, then the efficiency is around fifty, no, forty fifty percent Because there is already another, no, strain of the virus mutation And it doesn't work for this So they do another one, so every year you have to get new shot for the flu, and it's always behind So now with the coronavirus, it's the same thing No, there are mutations coming now from various places Which they cannot guarantee that the vaccination which they, no, so tediously actually, no, made It will actually work So unfortunately, they always step behind the modes of nature No, that's how it goes They are trying to figure out some, no, solution to the problem, but It's temporary and it's very inefficient So as devotees, we should understand this, at least attempt, try to understand it And then, we can work it out, now, what should we do? How should we work on it? We have to learn to depend on Krishna, we have to learn to surrender Like for example, no, when you have, Shahrapat gives the example Then you have the bird, he has a nest Babies are there in the nest But the bird has to go out to fetch something, no, for the babies to eat So then, what the bird can do? The bird has to depend on the Lord, that, okay, no? He will protect the baby, so then he goes, collects, comes back, feeds the babies Now, if it happens that somebody comes and eats the babies, so what can he do? If he wouldn't go Then, the babies will die of hunger, he will die So he has to depend, so we also have to learn to depend We have to educate ourselves, ourselves, no, come out of the ignorance And then, now, do whatever we should do Whatever is our duty Based on our varna, based on our ashrama Perform our duties to the best But, being attached to that, okay, I did this and I must get back this It's a little foolish, to think like that, that it will work It works, I mean, you go, you work And you expect, I work today and I get salary for today No, okay, temporary it works But after some time, you come to work and, no, and then you come to here, okay, we don't need you anymore We don't want you to work here Or, no, there are some companies, no, in some countries, I think in India also People work, but they get no money They only get promised that, oh, sorry, we don't have money now, so please work another month and we will give you for two months Or for three months, and then, no And after some time, sorry, our company is closing down, so you will, no, not work anymore, go home It's, what can you do? And many of these people, no, they have, no, some loans to pay They have to take care of their families, what will they do? No? So, it's a very pitiful situation Everybody is running, so it's either Rajaguna or Tamaguna But, there is no solution Because we are always looking for the material solution So only if we properly understand the principles on which That the jiva is here and how to get out of here Then we will always be sukhaduka We will be constantly, no, happiness, distress, and then, no, things will be happening at like a circle So, now, the Uparishamritta we are talking about That's actually the real approach to how we can start getting out of this material world To understand, we have to take charge of our desires We have to take charge of our activities And then, we can, we can get out So now, it's up to us how we decide One may say, but, oh, you don't understand No, oh, I have, I have to do this, I have to do that Remember to karam Maharaj, right? He had the friends and the friends could have gone with him Now, they saw the vimana They could have stepped into the vimana and go with him back to Vaikunta But they decided, oh, sorry, I have some other duties now to do This time I cannot go So what can you do? How can you help people like that? They are, no, they decided, they have decided for themselves And unfortunately, it's their own decision So then, we have to take charge of our decisions That's basically what it is And this is what the Uparishamritta teaches us First, control your senses So you are not lusty, greedy, no, angry So you don't make decisions under emotions, because it's always wrong So control emotions, control the anger, greed, lust, envy Control that And, don't let it happen again And, do something for your well-being Now, come to real yoga So then you come close to the Lord, you come in connection with the Lord By the proper relationships which you develop, now among the devotees And you expand it on the Lord So that's, that's the reality But not many people actually want to understand this They are not They don't want to understand because they feel, no? If I go for this, then I will lose this Or if I surrender, I become Krishna conscious, that means, no, I will have to, no, give up my money Or give up my facility So, it's a fear So, that's why the association with devotees is so important Because in that association, we can see Look at the other devotees They also did the same thing And now, they are being happy Follow them And look at the materialists Okay, he put so much effort into working And he made so much money But then, does the money bring happiness? You have to use the money properly to get something out of it The money itself, just knowing that you have, no, ten crores on your account What does it, no, it doesn't do anything There was one lady And, no, she died of starvation She was an old lady and after, no, she was living in one apartment And They found, no, after some time coming by, she was not coming out And They figured out, they opened, they figured out, she was dead For some time already, some days, weeks So, and they figured out, she didn't have anything at home She died just of starvation But then, they checked her accounts And she had a million dollars on her account But, no, according to the relatives, no, they say Oh yeah, that was her last million, and she did not want to break it So, she is dying of starvation, having million dollars on the account, cannot use it Because she didn't want to break last million What's a pity? Now, what can you do with people like that? They have money, they cannot enjoy it So, if we don't suppose to have it, we cannot enjoy that, we cannot use it But if you depend on Krishna, what you are supposed to get, you will get anyway So, that's ultimately Krishna consciousness So we can go on Doing our duties and focusing on Krishna That helps, everything else is temporary May help, may not help But if it does, it's just temporary
Thank you Maharaj Maharaj, I also want to ask, they bring questions, asking Because devotees are using the sanitizer, which is ninety percent alcohol And many a times, you know, we forget and we just sanitize the hand and even honor prasadam So, can you guide us little bit Maharaj?
Well, okay You see, what does the sanitizer do? Right, so, it's alcohol, so it's supposed to kill the bacteria But then, there is also some other thing with the alcohol and then it leaves residue on the hands Alcohol itself, it's not considered, no, suchi, it's actually, no, unclean So, best than using the sanitizer is just washing hands If one washes his hands And it purifies So if you are, no, not really fully sure that the washing hands, no, purifies enough And you are kind of like a feeling that you have to use the sanitizer because doctors say So okay, use that, but then wash your hands with water after that The sanitizer is not pure and clean Water is So, do it double, no, sanitize your hands and then wash your hands with water So that's It's like this, okay, you sanitize your hands, right? Now, when you go to the toilet And after you come to the toilet, you sanitize your hands and you are fine? Because it doesn't give you, doesn't clean Right? You have to use water, the water cleans Water purifies You cannot say that the sanitizer just, no, takes care It may take care of something, but, no It's alcohol and therefore, no, it's also not really pure So water should be used after that Yeah?
Yes, thank you Maharaj, thank you, because we also heard that alcohol is not clean It is muchi, so I thought let us get clarified Thank you Maharaj, thank you so much We already are six, six fifty Maharaj We can read Oh, there is a question from Roni Prabhu, Roni Prabhu you can ask, you can have question, ask
Hari Krishna Maharaj Dhanurpranam Maharaj, it is actually in continuation to my last question in our last session So sometimes we are bewildered near a situation which is Which seems to be like medieval oriented and which might impact our journey of Krishna consciousness So in that case, so we should consult the devotees Because it has, it might has less to do with our sadhana or it may be money oriented or something else oriented, so Because Krishna consciousness has everything to do with And any, any kind of actions or any kind of practicality in our life So, we should still discuss this with our senior devotees or like this
So Discuss exactly what?
Like taking advice
See, as long
Or does it come into Perjalpa?
See, it's like this Generally, when you make decisions Based on your intelligence And your mind, this is our, basically like the mental faculty, no, based on that, you make your decisions So, attachments involved, your mind and your intelligence And according to that, you see, you judge a situation And you make a decision, you do or you don't do That's, that's the procedure, that's how everything, every situation works So now, the question is, then how do you decide whether you do it or not do it? So, as we said, so attachments together with mind Then they will tend to judge a situation according, you like it, you don't like it Then if you use our intelligence for the decision, then the decision will dictate you according to what's right and what's not right So the intelligence can discriminate, because it's part of the intelligence, right, discrimination But the mind does not have the power to discriminate It only sees kind of like what's pleasing to the senses and I like that Or it's not pleasing to the senses, I don't like it So and then, then you have to come to the conclusion whether you do it or not do it It's like waking up in the morning It's winter, it's cold, you are supposed to get up because you are supposed to do something, but You don't have to go to work today maybe, so you don't have to get up, what will you do? And then, you have to make the decision, you either step out of the bed And go and take bath And go and take bath or you don't. So the mind can convince you, okay, come on, you are too tired, just take a little more rest. Or the intelligence will tell you, no, go, go, take bath because you need to do some other things, now you have more free time today, don't waste it. So you decide. And you take the you take the consequences, now you take the responsibility now for the decision you make. So as long as the Jiva is conditioned. So it's going to be based on the conditioned mind and the conditioned intelligence which you make the decision. So the mind can be, well, the intelligence can be trained. By some training. To decide not to learn what is right to do or what is not right to do. And the mind, then you get get your experiences. Now I like this, I don't like that. And if you don't go any farther, so then this is the level of consciousness you come to. And this is what you will make the decision based on. Now, if you are talking about devotee who is free of the conditioning. Or person free of conditioning. So then like yogis. So the yogis, they are able then to see. What is actually the paramatma dictating? Or don't say dictating, paramatma is advising. Paramatma is with us. And he is always now Krishna in the form of paramatma, he's always now instructing us to do the right thing. But because of the conditioned mind intelligence, we twisted, we perverted, we do it our way anyway. But when the devotee. Who is on the Brahmanata platform, able to perceive. The desire of of or the advice of the paramatma. Then he will just do that. He is able to directly perceive, he will do and he has no problem. He is happy. So he doesn't have to use now his material intelligence and mind because he is free of that. His desires are identical with the desires of Krishna. So that's devotee who is on the now. Ananda Maya platform, Krishna consciousness. So now, now we are talking. A person who likes to come there. But he is not there yet. So we got on my platform, basically. So that person, he knows, okay, I'm supposed to do something. And. To do that, sometimes I am able to and sometimes I fail. Sometimes I know what to do. Sometimes I don't know what to do, but most of the time I think I know what to do. I don't know really, but I think ego gets away now in the way then. Still attachments. So based on that. We had the desire, I want to do things right. And this is exactly what the devotional service is about. If I decide on a bhakti, I want to do things right, but I don't know how to. So therefore mechanically you do the basic principles of sarnabhakti. So you chant, not because you have necessarily taste for chanting, but because you know it's right. You promise, you make a commitment. Then you get up in the morning. You go for manglerati, you perform things as you are supposed to because you promised. So it's a commitment. And if you don't know what to do. Then now you know that there is something which I don't know. And if I don't know, better ask, ask somebody who knows. He will give the right advice. And then it's up to you to accept it. And or to reject it. So like example, the king, a a king. He is responsible for all the citizens. He makes the decisions. And he enforces the decisions. But the king actually, he is not so confident. He may be confident, but he knows that because how he works. Is under the influence of passion. So he doesn't take any chances. And he is not going to make the decision on his own. Even though he may be very, very capable. But we see from the examples, even the great kings like King Gudishthir. Pritu Maharaj. So those kings, they have ministers. The ministers are Brahmanas. Who they only. Study Shastra. And they advise the king how things should be done. So sometimes they make the decisions for the king. But they never claim, I know, I advise the king, I made the decision, no. King asked them because he trusts them and they advise him. But it's up to the king whether he takes the advice or not. Because it is going to be his responsibility. So if you don't know what to do. And you want to do things right. You ask advice of the senior. And then it's up to you to take the decision, take take the advice or not. But you cannot blame somebody now for even like your own advice. Now you should know. Whom to ask, you should be very sincere and Krishna will guide you. So and then. That's the safest way. Yes?
Yes, yes Maharaj, thank you so much, yes it. It very much answers everything which I I had in my mind, thank you so much Maharaj. Hari Krishna.
More questions then?
Yes, devotees, do we have more questions? Because our camera session is going on the Q and A only. So it is better if we have any questions, then we can ask. Maharaj, one devotee in the last session had asked about envy. They asked this question that where does the envy come from? Because they said that each quality comes from the spiritual world, so how do we see?
See. Envy. You can say that is. Perverted jealousy. Okay? Under circumstances. Then then jealousy is constructive. Because now you see, sometimes a person is jealous of someone. But jealousy means what? He wants to be like the person. He is jealous of his position, he is jealous of what he has, and he also wants to have what what the person has. So it can inspire him to work harder. Or not to do more to get what the other person has. So jealousy. Can be constructive. Now. And sometimes we see now even in the spiritual world, now jealousy now is there, that you see now. Chandravari now and Radharani's camp, there is a lot of jealousy going on. But when you pervert the jealousy, then you get envy. Then envy is. Similar in that that I see somebody has something. The person has something which I don't have. But I don't want to work hard to get it, I want him not to have it. I want to destroy what he has and I I will feel good. I'm envious of what he has. So it's not necessarily I want it. But I don't want him to have it. And this, this is very tamasic, because it's not constructive, it's destructive. So the the envy. Cannot be really used now in Krishna consciousness because it destroys. But it comes from the constructive. So now the envy should be given up. We may now turn the envy into jealousy. And get something kind of like a, oh, I'm so jealous of the devotee, now he is such a pure devotee, okay, let me also become. Now like that. I am jealous of him, he is chanting sixty four rounds every day, okay, let me also do that. So that's a constructive thing, now you can you can do that. But. Envy on its own cannot be used in Krishna consciousness because it destroys. So it can be twisted. Like we know so many things in the now, in the material world, that are just a reflection of the spiritual world. And now we have to. Shift it back, we have to reflect it back to get the right vision of it, to properly use it. So envy is also there. Yes?
Yes, thank you Bharaj. So we say Maharaj that it it is like it it that in the spiritual world, there is there is a transcendental jealousy and the perverted form is envy here.
Yes.
Okay. Okay Maharaj. Hari Krishna, so devotees, do we have any other question for Maharaj? Today we are having Q and A only as you can hear. So if anybody has any other question from our NOI classes.
Hari Krishna Maharaj, Maharaj, I had one more question. It has not to do with NOI, but I just had it for the time being. So the paramatma feature is not there in spiritual world Maharaj, is this right?
Now, paramatma, manifestation of Krishna in this material world to guide the Jivas. It's a purushavata.
Okay, so it's not there in the spiritual world. But spiritual master is there.
Well, spiritual master actually now is. Everybody is Krishna conscious, so now the spiritual master is the Krishna, everybody is just doing for Krishna to please him. And everybody knows now what what is their siddhasvaru. So then what is their relationship with Krishna? And they do everything for just to please Krishna, to use their senses to please Krishna senses. Everybody is just happy, everybody works on the principle. Whether it's gokka or vaykuntha, now it can be levels, but it's going to be according to their rasa. So in Goloka, one of the four rasa is going to be there. For Krishna, never for themselves.
Okay, so there is no via media there, like it's a direct relationship there because what we. It is easy to perceive that there is a via media and we if we serve spiritual master, then Krishna is pleased, so that is not the thing is.
Someone. See Krishna is there and Shimati Radharani, she is the only real devotee actually. She is the only one who can satisfy Krishna fully. She understands every mood and everything of Krishna. Now. All the other gopis, manjaris. Gopas. Then now everybody else. Serves under Shimati Radharani. So somewhere or other. Everybody is connected to Shimati Radharani. And because of the devotees which are under the devotees. Dasa, 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 ang dasa. So those devotees, they are helping devotees who help. Those devotees who are helping Shimati Radharani, who takes care of Krishna. So each and every devotee, new devotee. Or now you can say another layer, they add. To the transcendental service. It's not that they are doing less. They are actually. Helping the devotees. To perform their services, so then Shimati Radharani can perfectly do her service. Like now Shimati Radharani and and Krishna, then they are having some pastimes. Then there are gopis and they just sit there, the monkeys don't disturb, nobody comes there now. And for that, then they may have some manjaris or they may have some now. Somebody else, gopas, or they may even some animals involved, or please now take care of this, now clean this. So everything is being taken care of, to the minute details. And those minute details are very important. So taking care of just even like a sweeping the dam. It's extremely important. We see in the example of Shavananda Pandit. Now who was just sweeping sevakunch. Now, so we may say some now it's very now inferior service, just sweeping. But it's not the act of sweeping, but it's act of his consciousness with which he sweeps. He was sweeping, now so then all the rocks and all the thorns, he gets away, so then when. Shimati Radharani with Krishna come for the rasa dance. So they will not get hurt. So sweeping with the consciousness attracted. The attention of Shimati Radharani who gave him darshan because of the sweeping, now with his consciousness. So this is the level, that's those are the devotees. So Krishna. If you try to serve Krishna directly, then he doesn't appreciate it much, why? Because we don't know how to. We are limited. But if. The person who knows how to serve, you serve, he serves Krishna. And you are trying to help her or her friends, her devotee. That way Krishna recognizes. And he is very happy because you are adding into the transcendental ecstasy. That's which is ever increasing. Because of the devotees, of the layers and layers, unlimited layers of devotees who are helping in the whole chain of Krishna is satisfied. You understand?
Yes, yes Maharaj.
But that way anybody can be engaged. Nobody can be involved. And it increases the maduria, it increases actually the the. The rasa, the taste. The sweetness. Of the devotion.
Yes, thank you Maharaj.
Thank you, yes, Roshma Mahaji, you have a question?
Yes, Prabhuji, Hari Krishna Prabhuji, Hari Krishna Maharaj, Stanvath Pranam. Prabhuji, my question is that we say that we cannot control our senses. So we should try and engage our senses in the service of Krishna. But what if our mind doesn't let us do so? So what is the solution to that if the mind doesn't let our senses to be in Krishna's service?
You see, the the mind. In the beginning it may rebel. It may not let us. But the mind is such, if if we insist. And keep insisting. It will eventually give up. It may take some time. But if we know by our intelligence that some things are good to do. And we always try to do the right thing. But due to our mind, we may not do it properly. Because being attached to. Because being attached to something else, not is that. And after the action happens, then we develop like a guilty conscience. Knowing that, oh, I had again done something wrong. So this conscience is there to protect you. So and then you're starting, oh, no, 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 next time I will not do it. And with your intelligence, you start thinking about what can I do to prevent it for it not to happen next time? And you find a way. So you do something about it, you prevent yourself. But after some time, again the mind becomes very strong and again makes you fall down. So and again guilty conscience comes and you try to figure out, all right, now I have to do something to prevent it again, more. And if you keep at it, even you may not be, no, very pushy. But little pressure, just keep, keep at it and the mind will be giving up little by little. If you push more, it will give more. But if you can do only little with your intelligence, then okay, do, do little with the help of devotees, with the help of chanting the holy name, the purifying anartas and getting taste in devotional service, then you will overcome the problems. It depends on you how fast you want to do it. It's like if you have a boil, right? Now the boil is painful. So then, now what will you do? Now, sometimes, okay, when the boil gets ripe, then you can do basically two things. You either squeeze it, which is very painful, or you kind of like it just tolerate it and now let it get out, now let it leak out. And over many days, now hopefully it will now get out. So it will be less painful, but it will be, the pain will last longer. So then you decide what you want to do. You know, if you squeeze the boil, there will be severe pain, but after that it's over. If you don't, then the pain will be less, but it will last longer time. So if you are already dissatisfied with the situation in the material world, you are sick of this place and you want to go back to Krishna this lifetime, then you don't mind little pain, which is then now not gratifying your senses, now to the extent you would, now the mind would like to. You take it the painful way, you squeeze the boil and you know the pain is over. But if you don't mind it, okay, I'll take it easy. So it may take few more lifetimes. But now eventually also that will be cured. So you have to now take the responsibility into your hands. Sheal Prabhupada recommends just take it the more little bit painful way. So then do everything for now what you need to do to get out of here this lifetime. Which it's not much, it's just following the devotee principles and chanting minimum sixteen rounds every day. Now studying Bhagavatam, studying Bhagavat Gita and associating with devotees, taking prashad. So yes, in one sense it's very painful because we are, no, we are restricting ourselves, we are restricting our mind, our desires, our senses. But on the other hand, if you accept it, then it's very pleasurable. Now the association with devotees, it's now millions, millions of times better than with non-devotees. So if you learn to appreciate it, then what will you look for anyway? What else? Nothing else, you will be happy. So you can actually develop happiness now in Krishna consciousness. That's the whole point. That it's not just restricting or based on fear, it's based on pleasure. But we don't understand the subtle pleasure because we are so engrossed in our, no, gross pleasure, the senses. So first we need to experience that there is something now much more refined than just the sense gratification. And now that in the association of devotees, we can experience. So once we experience that, then we are able to convince the mind that give up, give up that, you know, other nonsense, focus on this, this is much better. Yes?
Thank you Maharaj. So what I feel is that following regulative principles is not difficult. Taking prasadam is not difficult, the only challenge comes with attentive chanting. So that is the only challenge, when you are chanting, sometimes you know, you don't even realize that you have completed the whole mala, whole one round. So that's the only challenge I'm facing right now. And I feel that that is also anama prad. So it's like pouring water in the, in the, we are, we are trying to lamp, light the lamp and then we are pouring water also. So this is what you explained in few last classes. So how to overcome that?
Yeah, you see, like we also explained last time about the naa apparat, now that the committing simple activities on the strength of the holy name. Right? So whenever you are chanting, try to focus on the chanting. Now, sometimes it happens that the mind becomes distracted and you lose the focus. You are losing the focus, then immediately you should bring back the mind to the focus. The moment you are losing the focus, if you are not aware of it, it's not an apparat. You are being distracted but unconscious. You bring the consciousness back, when you become aware of it, immediately bring the consciousness back to chanting. So and then you treat the mind like this, the mind will be more obedient and you will be able to focus on the chanting all the time in after some time, after doing it. But if you are consciously not conscious of the chanting, that's apparat. So that you are unaware sometimes, don't worry about it much, just bring it back, just keep bringing the mind back onto the chanting. And it will become obedient, it will be easier and easier, you can do it. Okay?
Yes Maharaj, thank you Maharaj, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, thank you Maharaj. Already seven thirty today time. Thank you, but it was very nice Maharaj to have this discussion and also on the COVID front, you also explained on, you know, whose shelter we should take and we, there is no materials, you know, solutions, you know.
Right, yes.
So hopefully we will try to apply some of these Maharaj. So thank you so very much Maharaj and we, all of us, we loudly chant the Hare Krishna mantra to thank Maharaj and pray for Maharaj. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Is only in SP T, Arjo Bharti, Priti, Arjo Bharti, Priti Bharti Maharaj Ki Jai, Jagat Gurusheela Prabhupada Ki Jai.
Jai, Jai, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna. So thank you devotees. Our question and answer session unplanned ho gaya. But I hope it is very essential to get, you know, the heart of the senior devotees and hear what they have to say. So thank you so very much. Hare Krishna. So we'll meet on Friday for our Lila Amrit class. Hare Krishna, all great institutions.